All right, thank you. Welcome, everybody, to the July 13th Select Board Meeting. We are going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Oh, no, sorry. Hold the order. Mark, if you could just state your name and let us know if anyone's in the room with you.
Sure, my name is Selectman Mark Lemans. I am the only one in this room.
All right, thank you.
I'm Chad Bowen. I'm the only one in the room.
Thank you, and I'm Kelly Boyer. I'm the only one in the room. So we'll go ahead and do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the public, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, free, and justice for all. Thank you, and I'm Kelly Boyer. Derek, can I read the Right to Know?
Yes, please.
As the Vice Chair of the Goshen Town Select Board, due to the COVID-19 outbreak and in accordance with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 202004, this Board is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, this is to confirm that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. The town is utilizing a WebEx platform for this electronic meeting. The public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following telephone number: (603) 766-5646, and using the participant (785645), followed by the pound sign. Providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. The town previously gave notice to the public of how to access the meeting using the available telephone number with the posted agenda. Providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during a meeting if there are problems with access. If anyone has a problem with telephone access, please call[151.47][151.47](603) 384-3624. Adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event that the public is unable to access the meeting, we will adjourn the meeting and have it rescheduled at that time. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking roll call attendance, which we just did. When each member states their presence, also please state whether there's anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under Right to Know. That's Peter on?
He's not on yet. He's coming on right now.
Okay. Give me a second. Oh, Peter, we were just talking about roll call. If you could please state your name and if anyone's in the room with you.
You hear me?
Yes, now I can hear you. I think you're cutting out. Peter, can you just state your name and if anyone's in the Is it just me who can't hear him?
No, I'm not able to hear you. Selectman Georgianis, if you can repeat the audios cutting out. Pete, if you can hear me, I will send you the call-in information, and you could always call in for audio using the phone. We're still having trouble hearing you. Kelly, if you'd like, I can help Pete get signed in on the telephone. If you want to move on to... Do you want to get him connected first?
Yeah, let's get him connected before we do the minutes. I will go ahead and note that we have no announcements for this evening. Mark or Chad, did you have any announcements?
Hi, Pete. Yep, we can hear you now, Pete. You're gonna want to turn down... Pete, you need to turn the audio on your computer off.
How's that?
We can hear you actually through the phone and through WebEx now, so...
What the hell?
Peter, one more time, do you just want to state your name and if anyone's in the room for you, with you?
How's that?
Yes.
Hello?
We can hear you, Pete.
All right, good. Ready.
And Pete, could you just, for the roll call, can you just let us know if there's anyone in the room with you?
No one's in the room with me.
Thank you.
And just to check, Peter, did you have any announcements?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. So it's 6:12, so we'll open it up for public comment. Derek, is there anyone on the phone for public comment?
No, there is no one on the telephone for public comment.
Okay. Great, thank you. We'll go ahead and close that. And now we'll do the Acceptance and Corrections of Minutes for 6:22:20, Public and Non-Public. Any corrections on that?
I'll make a motion. We accept the 6:22:20, Public and Non-Public meetings with directions if need be.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Mark, seconded by Peter. We'll go ahead and do a roll call. Mark?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Chad? Chad, you're on mute.
Trying to... I'm staying.
And me, yes, thank you. All right. All right, next up, we have the DPW Director, Action 5, Tab A, Regarding the Sports Field Fencing Project. Adam, are you on? There you are. All right.
I am. Hi. Okay, so thanks for having me on. Can you hear me? All right. So I'm presenting on behalf of DPWN Parks and Rec tonight. We've got a fence RFP that we'd like to advertise for an August 4 opening. The bid spec is written largely on the NAMHTDOT specifications for chain link fencing. It does include about 1,000 feet, 967 feet of chain link fence, which primarily goes around the largest stormwater pond. There's various gates throughout, both at the main entrance and then at the pond itself, and then one small one for the field. We've also got 200 linear feet of vinyl privacy fence as you come in the entrance for the direct-to-butter there along the entranceway, and 531 linear feet of split rail fencing to the rail trail specifications in Red Cedar, which divides the parking area and pedestrian way from the athletic fields. There's also an additional option there for 180 feet of that chain link fence by the pond to be replaced with a 13-foot tall ball stop net. So maybe some of those errant soccer balls might not end up in the pond, and then we've got another whole problem on our hands over there. So there is an option for that, to see how that comes in. The CIP amount for this project, Rick had, was $75,000, or at least that's what the estimate of the project would be. And again, we'd like to advertise this now to open bids on August 4 for the first meeting in August to award.
Adam, so the estimate for this was $75,000. That's coming from the Parks and Rec CIP?
That's correct.
Okay, and then, who would be doing the installation?
So this would be...
That's included in this RFP?
Exactly, yep. This would be purchase and installation. I should have mentioned that. Sorry, thank you.
Does anyone else have questions?
Want a motion, Kelly? I'll make it for an RFP if you're ready.
Yes, please.
Make a motion for the RFP to go out for $75,000 for fencing, chain link fence, vinyl metal fencing, various locations around the sports complex here.
One second.
I'd like to discuss that. Well, I could discuss that motion. That motion shouldn't contain a dollar figure in it.
Okay, I'll... If that being the case, I'll remove my dollar figure in that motion, but I'll still go with that motion of the RFP.
Okay, thank you. So Mark, correction to your motion. Chad, second?
Yep.
And we'll do a roll call. Peter?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
And me, yes. Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. I'll pass that on to Rick as well, and we'll get that in the papers ASAP.
And then we have the 2020 CIP Vehicle Replacement.
Okay, thank you. So as you know, we advertised a few weeks back for the six-wheel dump truck and the 1.5-ton or Ford F-550 plow truck bids. So that was actually four separate bids, one for the cab and chassis of each, and then the plow and dump package by upfitters, since usually two separate entities will do that work. We did receive several, multiple bids for each item. We've got two bids received for the six-wheel chassis, Liberty International and Freightliner, three bids for the 1.5-ton chassis, and one was on timely. So actually four total, but three timely bids. Three bids for the six-wheel body and two bids for the 1.5-ton. And I believe in your packet, you've got the bid tabs for those respective bids. Tonight, I would like to recommend award of the cab and chassis for each of those trucks, but not the plow and dump body specs. We did have a low bidder that we haven't used before for the plow gear and the dump bodies, and we'd like a little bit more time to do some due diligence on what they're offering and recommending to make sure it meets what we need. We think it will, but I don't want to rush that one, since really the long pole and the dent for both of these trucks is just getting the trucks themselves in hand, because until that happens, you can't get it to the body upfitter anyway. The recommendation that I gave you was for Freightliner for the six-wheel dump truck. That's the company that supplied our last few six wheels. They were the low bidder for the project and met the spec as written. For the 10.5, the Ford F-550, we're right at a strange point in time, and had we known it, we might have changed our bidding a little bit earlier, maybe a little bit later in the year. But we're right at the very end of the 2020 availability window. So if people didn't have a vehicle on lot in stock, they weren't able to bid. So we had three, luckily, we had three local Ford dealerships, which had one truck each that would meet the spec, and no more. So we'd like to award to the low bidder there, which would be Hillsborough Ford, for a total of 51318. If possible, I'd like to add $300 to that amount for the factory service manual. I forgot to add that option in the bid amount that I gave you. So a low bidder would be Hillsborough Ford for 51618, if you include that $300. But I'd also, if possible, because of the lot availability, I'd like permission tonight, if we call them tomorrow, if you do award tonight, and we call them tomorrow and the vehicle's gone. All three bids were within, I think, $400 of each other without trade, and I'm not recommending trading in the F-550 for the amounts that they had bid. I'd like permission maybe to just work down the list to go to London Dairy Ford next, and then Auto Fair, if possible, in order to get a truck in hand. If we don't do one of those three, or if one of those isn't available, and we have to come back to the Board, it'll probably be gone by the time we have another meeting. And then at that point, we'll get away for the 2021 model year availability window with the pricing, since we didn't go out to bid for that. I think we'd probably have to rebid, just to be fair, to all the other Ford dealers.
Adam, what was the CIP amount for the six-wheel dump truck?
So when we put them in CIP, we include the entire truck. So it's the truck plus the plow gear and dump body. So for the six-wheel, CIP amount was $187,000. Based on the bids we received from the low bidders, we would be under that amount if we do award to low bid, so that's good. We also, as you know, when we put a number in CIP, we're required to put the gross amount less, you know, without any trade-in. We were offered $21,000 from the low bidder, Freightliner, for the trade-in vehicle. I would recommend that we accept that $21,000 and trade in that vehicle. I just, I don't think the amount that we were offered for the F-550 is quite enough, plus the fact that we like to have a little bit of flexibility with those trucks that anybody without a CDL can drive in the winter. And to trade that as soon as we get the vehicle puts us in a little bit of a lurch if we do have a new labor or something without a CDL that we want to be able to plow. It's nice to have that extra vehicle until we finally get the full truck delivered. The one, I guess, the one other thing I should mention is the amount for the Freightliner for the six-wheel award does include a warranty, a seven-year warranty from Cummins. Yes, sir.
All set, Kelly?
Yep, thank you. Go ahead.
Number one, I just heard you're increasing the fleet. So next year, you could potentially come with us again with that same six-wheeler and say, hey, I need to replace this six-wheeler. I am not for increasing the fleet. If you're gonna, if we're gonna buy a new truck, we get rid of the truck. We already have a good-sized fleet. So I'm not really in favor of doing that.
I'm not either, sir. Can I respond to that just before you move on?
Go ahead.
I'll forget. I've got a short-term memory. So we don't want to increase the fleet. What we don't want to do is give up our truck before we actually have a usable truck in return on the F-550. So if I allow Hillsborough Ford, for example, to take the vehicle we have now, now we have zero trucks in hand, because as soon as we get the F-550 from Hillsborough, we send it to the body company, and I don't want to do that piece until we get it back and it's usable. So what I like to do is put that one out to local auction, or maybe a white farm, but I prefer the local auction. I think we could get a fair amount for that truck.
Okay, no, just as long as I'm not increasing the fleet, I'm okay with that. And then the second thing, Derek, I think will be involved in this discussion. Derek, we had discussed that if we were budget shortfall, we'd be looking at this particular items to help offset a budget shortfall. Where do we stand on that?
I will report on that later in my department overview, but right now, revenues are actually looking pretty good. The town clerks brought in almost half a million dollars in June. They got caught up in their motor vehicles, and we're actually ahead of our motor vehicle revenue projections of where we should be. Again, that's a line that we budget very conservatively with. So we're looking very good on that one. And the Governor has indicated meals and rooms and the shared revenues that was put into the biennial budget, he would keep those whole. If there is any shortfall, we anticipate it could be in the highway block grant. And after talking with Adam, we were just, if there is a revenue shortfall from the highway block grant, we would just do that amount less of road construction, because that's really what those funds are meant for, to help the local town pay for road construction. So if we saw a shortfall in that revenue, we would just scale back the road plan a bit at the end of the year.
What they've indicated, Derek, correct me if I'm wrong, is a 7.5% reduction from last year's number, from the plan number, I should say. And that represents about $33,000 for the town. So it's kind of within that margin of error anyway, where we'd have our contingency of 10% to 15% on our road plan. So really, it'd come out of our contingency, so it could result in zero change in the end result.
I'm sure the other board members would agree with me that as we keep harping on how much we need the road plan, we want to make sure that that stays funded as much as possible. Now, I just heard, Adam, that you say you're pretty sure that that is gonna happen. And the savings on the Freightliner, would that be able to help offset that?
It certainly could. I think it gives you, as the Board, some good flexibility, because my CIP line itself will be, in theory, down $21,000 for the trade-in, plus, you know, a little bit, because the low bids came in under that $187,000. So I think it is gonna create some flexibility for you. And do keep in mind, too, I've got a couple other vehicles that we haven't requested to go out to bid yet that are on CIP. So it gives you some options, certainly, on those items, and then going forward for the road plan, too.
All right, I'm good. I just want to protect that road plan, because we harp on that so much. And that's one of the biggest calls we get from our contingent, that we need to make sure we continue to fund that program. I'm good.
Yeah, I agree. Mark or Chad, do you have any questions?
If we don't, Adam, on the body that you're looking at, how far out are we gonna be to putting these trucks together? Will they be on the road for snow? Are we gonna be behind like we've been in years past?
With delivery, I suspect we'll be at the tail end of the winter again, if not beyond, like we have been in years past. You know, obviously, this year was a little different. One thing we could try to all do again next year, I think we had said it during the budget season, hey, let's try to get out to bid real early in the season, because of how long it takes. And then COVID came and kind of put the hold on that. So maybe try again on 2021 on that, trying to do an early-year bid right after vote. Even that, we only lost, I guess, a month and a half, but it's still quite a long lead.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. I'm all set, Kelly.
Chad, any questions? No, you're good. All right. I'll take a motion for the six-wheel dump truck.
I'll make a motion that we accept a bid from Freightliner on the six-wheel dump truck for $86,651, additional trade-in allowance of $21,000.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Motion by Peter, seconded by Mark. Any discussion?
Just have a quick thing. Was this the one where you're looking for $300 extra, Adam?
That was the F-550, the next one.
Okay, thank you. Nope, I'm good.
All right, well, no questions. We'll put it up for a vote. Peter?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
And yes for me. Motion passes. Thank you. Next, we have the, I'll take a motion for the F-550.
Make a motion that we purchase the F-550 for $51,318, with an additional $300 for the service manuals from Hillsborough Ford. And if that's not available, we award to London Dairy, which is just a $400.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Motion by Peter, seconded by Chad. Any discussion? Okay, take a vote. Peter?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes for me. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you all. And Derek, did you want me to give my department update now or wait till later?
I'll leave it up to the Vice Chair, how she wants to handle that.
Yeah, that would be for me, Adam. Go ahead.
Okay, sure. Can do. That'll spare us from the baby in the background. Okay, so I got you a memo with some of our highlights the last couple of weeks. Primarily, the biggest task has been following up from Continental's work. They did a lot of paving, most of the season's worth up front. So what we have to do is follow that up with shouldering, both shoulder gun on the roads that don't have curb, and then backing up any of the newly-installed curbs. So sometimes the curb reveal is such that they need to replace sections altogether to make sure that it's...
Adam, can I interrupt for one second? Sorry about that. At Tab 7, the second page is Adam's update, just if you want to follow along. Thank you. Go ahead.
So when they install new curbing, that's gonna be backed up as well. So there's a lot of gravel that gets consumed there. So it's a pretty interesting process. I call it a rolling chain, I guess, several vehicles and operators and people on the ground to get it all spread out and smooth and compacted, and then flaggers on either end. So it's quite a sight to see, and it takes a while. We certainly thought Sherrill Hill would never end. But for the most part, that's done. We've got a little bit more on Lesnick, I believe, is the last of the new roads. Shirley Hill project continues right now. We're working on the second large box culvert over there, so that needed a deck replacement and new curb, brush curbs, and then guardrail will be coming in after that, once the concrete's placed. So that's making good progress. After that, after we move on and let subcontractors take over for the guardrail work there, we'll be working on the drainage for the remainder of Shirley Hill itself, so we can get that project, hopefully, on the road to completion. The other things, little stuff that's been going on, we had a pretty mountainous pile of brush, the transfer station, which you probably noticed if you go over there. So big, in fact, that it was affecting our Wi-Fi signals from the office to the transfer station and the data from the fuel station, the line-of-sight system, and it was so big, it was impacting that. Uh, it's a line of sight system and it was so big, it was impacting that. Um, so, uh, we did get that ground, but we've also worked with the fire marshal, uh, here locally, uh, in a corner to, uh, obtain a open burn permit from the state. So in the future, we can burn that as it comes. Um, don't have a lot of details on yet. He was still working on that on Friday, but it sounded like he had it in hand and he just needed to debrief us on kind of the operation. But, um, uh, to give you a kind of an general magnitude, it's thousands of dollars each time we have that pile of ground. So if we can somehow maintain it by burning every so often to keep it down, uh, that'll be helpful. But I'll come back to us more info before we would ever, uh, talk about a first burn there. Um, the used oil tank fuel, uh, project is getting closer. It looks like, uh, sorry about that. It's me. Uh, it looks like it's going to be a September, uh, timeline and it's gonna be a couple of weeks, uh, where the system is fully down. So there's work to get us, uh, set up with wax cards for on lighted and for the DOT fueling station. They've got a DOT system there, uh, to allow us all to fuel up while that project goes on. Uh, but I did kind of throw out the, the grenade the other day that, you know, part of the project is to get inside the tanks and actually inspect them and verify that they're okay for continued use. So I just kind of a reminder, it's been a bit since that was bid out, that there's a chance they open that tank, get inside and it's no good. And in that case, we kind of have to shift gears pretty quickly and decide what we're gonna do from there. All options are on the table, I suppose, uh, for that. Um, had a little bit of time for some, uh, the more aesthetic type stuff. So cemeteries, Main Street, Gerbing Town Common Areas have been, uh, mulched and weeded, uh, largely anyway. Um, we've also got, uh, the big news, I guess, I saved my, buried my lead here. Uh, the Village Precinct, I know I gave you heads or started to give a heads up in a memo a couple of weeks ago and then, uh, Village Precinct put the gobbage on it, but, uh, it sounds like it's back around again. The Village Precinct may be replacing the water line on East Union Street from Main Street to the factory. Uh, originally that was part of the approval process for the factory, but it doesn't look like they are going to have their ducks in a row to pay for that project. So the Village Precinct might take it on. Um, they're trying to do it now as a, a target of opportunity now. The sewer has ripped up most of the road. Um, originally we had deferred that project, uh, from a DPW standpoint for a couple of years and we were going to time it with water. We don't want to reclaim the road if the water line is, is a hundred and fifty years old or whatever it is there. So, um, now that they've accelerated their plans, it makes a lot of sense as a group of three now to try to get this done. So, uh, it's about seven hundred feet of, of roadway there. If the Village Precinct votes tomorrow night to proceed with the replacement of that line, I'd like your permission ahead of time to, uh, add that, bump that up in our road plan to actually reclaim that road now, um, and add it to our list. Uh, there's not a drainage issue, so it's not a ton of work from a DPW labor standpoint, more from our subcontractors. Uh, there's the reclaim itself, um, a little bit of gravel to be added down the corner at the, at the pump station corner. Um, but then a company contractor would need to come in and, and set that, that line of granite curb. We do have money in the sidewalk repair budget that hadn't been earmarked yet that we could put towards that. Um, and, uh, get that done. And then in the end, we could take the money that sewer would have spent anyway for a full width patch because the trench they have is just so big. It's almost the whole road anyway. So the money they've saved now on a temporary patch that water is maintaining until they make up their mind. And then the final patch, which was going to be full width anyhow, um, of an inch and a half, we can take some of sewer's, uh, money, put it towards the project so we can save on the, on our end. So our two and a half inches of base would be half or nearly half paid by sewer. Water, we'll get the water line replaced, uh, and residents will be better off down there. And then we can kind of check that box on our, on our road plan in the way for, uh, for twenty twenty. So I'd like to add.
So Adam, you'll bring us.
In that particular, Adam, was that, um, that sidewalk was scheduled to be replaced the whole length this year. Um, in a discussion I had last year, I'm, it weren't there, it was Megan at the time, because that's part of the rail trail. When they get off the rail trail, they come down that sidewalk and it's really in rough shape. Uh, and there's been some concerns from the citizens about upgrading that. Uh, is that still gonna happen or are we putting that off now?
Um, so then the note I had was, taking a look at my road plan here, the note I had was to, uh, defer that until the road itself, since it was going to be two years for the road, it would have made sense to do it together. So can't necessarily speak to the original thought. I think, I, I think you're right. It sounds like East Union originally had been set for this year. I think at some point the road and the sidewalk got apart from each other, um, maybe as an oversight or maybe just because it was just so bad. So I, I think the remainder of East Union and then the remainder of the sidewalk would, would remain where it is, um, in the out years, but to get this little stretch, this first little stretch done now would make sense. But, uh, but no, to answer the question, we, we, I didn't have the, um, East Union sidewalk at all on the, on this year's road plan that was voted this, um, you know, back in the winter.
Good.
We do have some decisions to make right there at the truck company. It gets a little tricky.
As I said, that's part of the rail trail coming through there and that's the, that rail trail in that area is getting a lot of use now. So I don't know if you may not want to take another look at that.
Yeah, Adam, you'll bring us a proposal for that breakdown of what everybody's pitching in and how that's gonna work after tomorrow, I'd assume.
Yeah, I can. Um, it's pretty, um, pretty much from the asphalt perspective, it's just gonna be an inch plus, uh, from sewer that'll come off our normal tab.
Okay. Any other questions for Adam? All right, thank you. Uh, Derek, do you want to jump into the town administrators' report?
I'm sorry if I could. Sorry to interrupt. I forgot I had a page two on my own lap here. I do have a couple, uh, speaking of road plan and, and our funding kind of questions as we go forward. The state's asphalt pricing index is what we tie our local contracts to. So when the price of liquid asphalt rises or falls in the market, our cost of asphalt with continental paving tracks with that. Uh, right now asphalt's trending in a pretty good, uh, situation. They're not quite paying us per barrel like they, uh, were for oil there for a little while, but, um, it is down ten percent from June to July. Uh, so right now it looks like we are between that and contingency that we have normally built in. Um, which if we have a, a tough time in Warren Ave, that could be eaten up, but normally we keep that contingency. Uh, says we get closer to the end of the year, we can say, okay, it's time to bump a few streets up from the twenty twenty one plan into twenty twenty if, if, uh, the board wants to support that. Um, I'd like, uh, maybe to talk about adding the possibility of adding a couple of sections of road, um, to it if we do find ourselves in that situation. But it'll allow us to kind of get our ducks in a row with, um, with the paving companies. Um, and specifically the sections that I was thinking about, uh, bringing up would be Range Road, uh, just a twelve hundred foot section of that, that first real section. Uh, Langen Drive, uh, in totality is in terrible shape. Um, seven hundred feet of Kennedy Hill Road right from Addison to the farmhouse, that's the only section left of that piece of Kennedy, excuse me, that, um, hasn't been, uh, upgraded. We had a development that took care of the, a good chunk of that, but there's seven hundred feet left that hasn't been done. And then Walnut Hill Road would be due, is overdue for a, a fifteen year, um, maintenance overlay. So if we could bump that one up, that'd be another decent one that wouldn't require a lot of work from DPW's perspective, but could get ahead of our twenty twenty one list. So those four, uh, sections would be the ones that if, if we do have, uh, time and budget to allow, I would, I would recommend breaking up from twenty twenty one.
Okay, yeah, thanks for letting us know. If you, um, can bring that forward once Colossus is back and have a bigger discussion about all those moving road pieces. But, you know, I think we should take advantage of the, the lower costs right now if we can. All right. Any last ones, Adam?
That's it. Sorry, I forgot to mute. It's my baby's crying in the background.
No problem. All right, Derek, would you like to jump into the administrators' report now?
Yes, thank you very much. At tab six A, uh, you have your committee meeting scheduled for the next two weeks. Tomorrow night at six PM, the sewer commission is meeting.
I'll be there.
On Wednesday at six thirty PM, library trustees have a meeting.
I'll be there.
And Wednesday at seven PM, Parks and Rec Commission is meeting. Normally Chairman Adams covers this, but he's asked if, uh, there's somebody available to cover that on his behalf.
I agree with.
Uh, Selectman Georganis, I will send you the, uh, the meeting information. I believe they're meeting over at the Sports Complex. Uh, Thursday at seven PM, uh, CIP is meeting.
I'll be there.
Uh, next week on Wednesday at nine AM, the Highway Safety Committee is meeting.
Yep, I'll be there.
At six thirty PM, uh, Historic District Commission.
Yep.
Uh, seven PM on Wednesday of next week is Conservation Commission.
Let's call us.
That's normally, um, yeah, Chairman Adams, so I will confirm with him. And then Thursday of next week at seven PM is Planning Board.
Yes, I'll be, I'll be there.
Thank you. Next page, you have your consent agenda for this week. You have employee status reports for firefighter, AEMT, uh, step increase. You have, uh, crossing guard resignation, uh, school resource officer specialized assignment stipend. You have a police officer, uh, for an associate's degree stipend. You have, uh, successful completion of probationary period for both the Director of Public Works as well as the Fire Chief. And then you have a Fire Chief Educational Degree Differential. There was a sympathy card in your, uh, meeting room. A Betterment Assessment warrant for Lynchville Danus Park Drinking Water Project. This is an off-cycle payout in the amount of three thousand, two hundred and eighty six dollars and seventy one cents. And then there is an event permit for Goffstown Main Street Program, the Uncommon Art on the Common on August first, uh, twenty twenty from eight to four PM.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second? We'll do that.
I'll second that, Kelly.
Thank you. Motion by Peter, second by Mark. Uh, Derek, I have a question about the event permit.
Yes.
I know that there were some stipulations where they had moved the event out due to COVID, but is, um, the, the fire department or anyone putting additional accommodations on them for having a public event next month?
I met with the Main Street Director, uh, last week to go over the precautions, uh, that they're following and I can, uh, bring the Fire Chief in. But they were fa- following all the, um, all the recommendations that's come down from the Department of Agriculture for farmers markets. And they had a very, uh, a very well thought out plan. They're gonna have a reduced number of vendors. Uh, but again, I can touch base with the Fire Chief to make sure that there's no issues. But, um, I did sit down with Dave Lawton for about an hour last week to discuss some of the precautions that they're following.
Great, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions? No? Okay, we'll go ahead and vote. Uh, Mark?
Yes.
Chat?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
And yes for me. Thank you. I'm just going down the line. Every time you guys move, it goes in a different order for votes, so.
Uh, at the, uh, your next page are your assessor's recommendations. Uh, Town Assessor recommends, uh, elderly exemption for map six, lot sixty four dash seven. Assessor is also recommending land use change tax for map four, lot seventy seven. Map four, lot seventy seven dash one, seventy seven dash two, seventy seven dash three and seventy seven dash four. And map three, lot twenty eight dash four.
I'll make a motion to approve the assessor's recommendations as presented.
Second.
I didn't hear who that was.
Peter.
Give it to Peter. Give it to Peter.
All right. Well, the motion by Chat, second by Peter. Any discussion? No? All right, we'll go to vote. Mark?
Yes.
Chat?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
And yes for me.
At tab six D, uh, you have, uh, an amendment to the agreement for assessment or assessing data collection. This was a, uh, five-year contract that was signed by the select board last spring, uh, with Corcoran Consulting Associates, uh, for approximately four thousand residential properties. Basically, they go out, they do eight hundred properties, they do, uh, measure, they update all the information for the assessor and then they bring it back. Uh, because of the COVID nineteen pandemic, uh, the assessor has, uh, negotiated a change, uh, this amendment to the contract. You have a copy of the original agreement as well as the amendment. Basically, they would just take the eight hundred, uh, residential properties from twenty twenty and they would put those into twenty twenty one. So next year, uh, the company would go out and measure sixteen hundred, um, of the properties. And they'd be able to start a little bit earlier than they normally would because again, they'd have, uh, twice the amount to go and measure.
Thank you. And Derek, just to clarify, that does not constitute any additional cost for us, right? There's no.
Correct. It does not. Yes, it does not change the, uh, the cost of the agreement.
Do you need a motion on that, Derek?
Uh, yes, please.
Yes, please.
Motion to approve the amendment of the agreement for data collection twenty nineteen and twenty twenty three between the town of Goffstown and Corcoran Consulting Associates.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Motion by Peter, seconded by Chat. Go ahead and vote. Mark?
Yes.
Chat?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
And yes for me. Motion passes.
At tab six E, you have, uh, volunteer appointments. You have a recommendation from the Historic District Commission to reappoint member Mary Sullivan as a full member for a term running from twenty twenty through March thirty first, twenty twenty three. And then you also have a recommendation from the Goffstown Economic Development Council, uh, to appoint John Napoli as a, uh, full Economic Development Council member with a term, um, that has already begun, but it would expire on, uh, March thirty first, twenty twenty two.
Motion to reappoint Mary Sullivan as a full member to the Historic District Commission, the term expiring March thirty first, twenty twenty three.
And I'll second that. As a sitting member on that committee, that was a unanimous vote on that. It was, uh, all in.
All right. Motion by Peter, seconded by Mark. Any discussion? Okay, Mark?
Yes.
Chat?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
And a yes for me. Thank you. I'll take the second motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint John Napoli as a full member of Economic Development Council with a term expiring March thirty first, twenty twenty two.
Second.
All right, thank you. Motion by Chat, second by Peter. Any discussion? No? Okay, we'll go ahead and vote. Mark?
Yes.
Chat?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes for me.
Thank you. At tab six F, uh, we have, uh, request to accept coronavirus emergency funding. This was some, this is a New Hampshire Department of Justice grant. Uh, we did receive, uh, notice a few weeks ago that the, uh, New Hampshire Department of Justice, uh, they were administering a, uh, federal Department of Justice, uh, funds. And they awarded, uh, the town, uh, reimbursement in the amount of twenty two thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars and thirty five cents.
Motion to accept and expend the New Hampshire Department of Justice coronavirus emergency grant in the amount of twenty two thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars and thirty five cents in accordance with NHRS A twenty one dash P poem forty three and authorize the vice chair to sign grant agreement paperwork.
I'll second that.
Okay, thanks. Motion by Peter, seconded by Mark. And for discussion, Derek, I have a question. Um, the motion is to accept and expend. Do we have, um, the, the full expenditures on this?
Uh, they are not in your packet. You have a, uh, copy of the RSA that allows you to accept and expend these, um, emergency funds. And, uh, we have the, a sample of the grant agreement. Uh, we do have, uh, the finance director and, uh, Fire Chief that might be able to give you a brief overview of some of the expenses that were included in this, uh, and that were being reimbursed for.
As long as it's the reimbursement is directly related to the COVID, um, funds that we were tracking or the expenditures that we were tracking, is that correct?
Yes, it's, it's for those for.
Can't tell him looking at you.
Yeah, you, for additional man hours, um, as well as some supplies related to COVID that we've been tracking.
Perfect, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we'll go to vote. Mark?
Yes.
Chat?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
And yes for me. Motion passes.
And that's all I had for the town administrators' report.
Uh, next up we have department head updates on tab seven. The first is from the Police Department.
Uh, Chief Sereno's not able to be on, uh, this evening. Chief Serrino is not able to be on this evening, but he basically put in his memo that they're fully operational and the employees are healthy, and they are continuing to monitor the employees' health. And the only final thing he did add, and I know that the Fire Chief had mentioned it at one point to me as well, that due to the increased calls for service to both the Police Department and the Fire Department, as well as some of the changes to social distancing guidelines in the state, they have stopped fulfilling requests for birthday parades.
Any comments or questions on the PD update? Okay, now we went ahead and did DPW, so Derek, if you'd like to give the Town Hall update?
Sure, thank you. We are open regular hours, Monday through Friday, 8 to 4:00 PM. We've been doing that since the 24th of June, so for about three weeks now. Been working with the Town Clerk and the elections. Danielle did a great job and reached out to the State EOC and did get us a list of all the PPE gear that's going to be coming down for us to use for the elections, so be working with the Town Clerk and the Fire Department to see if we need to fill in gaps and order any additional items, so that came down. We are starting to see absentee ballot requests and absentee registration requests come in, which is very early in the election cycle. And the Town Clerk is going to be bringing on some part-time help to help process those earlier than we originally budgeted for. The fortunate thing is those part-time hours will be reimbursable if we didn't budget for it through the Gopher Municipal Relief Funds. The memo in your packet says those hours prior to August 31st, but we do anticipate an announcement by the Governor this week that he's going to extend the deadline for spending those, those Governor, Gopher Municipal Relief Funds. As you can see on the memo, the tax collector has been very busy. We're ahead of our collection rate of where we were last year at about 84% collected. IT is working to bring forward an RFP to implement new office software. And then I did touch on it earlier, but the revenues right now are looking a little bit more certain than they were a couple of months ago. Town Clerk and Motor Vehicles is a little bit above where we'd like it to be with all things considered, so right now that is a little bit ahead at 55% over half the year, so we're doing well there, and we anticipate the state revenues to be pretty good. Department Heads have met to talk about CIP purchases for vehicle purchases or one-time projects, and we will be continuing to bring those forward. We're, again, with those not seeing the shortfall on the revenues and also some savings in some of the wage-related expenses with many positions vacant in the first and second quarter of the year. You will be starting to see some of those, those RFPs and bid results coming in for, again, those vehicles and those one-time projects. For example, last year, the Police Department ordered a cruiser right after town meeting, and it wasn't delivered until February, and by the time it was all outfitted and everything, they just got it onto the line a couple of weeks ago, so the Police Chief will be moving forward with those cruisers that were in the CIP budget. Other, other than that, things, business at Town Hall remains pretty steady.
Thank you, Derek. I have a question about regarding election stuff. I know that Kathy was looking into perhaps some sort of like drive-through registration options in different parts of town. And we talked about pushing out some absentee voter information to the community. Is that stuff still in the works?
Yeah, we're still working on the specifics. We need to be very careful on some of the messaging we do that, that we're putting out there in regards to the use of absentee ballots and absentee registrations. We've received that message loud and clear from the Secretary of State's Office that most of the stuff that we have to do is to refer voters to Secretary of State's website for their information, so there's a consistent message. I will talk with Kathy about any additional drive-through services, and I can bring an update on the meeting on the 27th. We've been focusing on the PPE and also getting those additional hours for the absentee ballot requests that are being filed right now. I'll bring an update at the next meeting on that.
Okay.
I have a question. Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Derek, there was a committee that was established for the elections and for the town. Have they met or we, I know I wasn't supposed to be a member of it, but haven't seen anything. Are we going, is that committee going to be getting together, or are we all sat?
No, we are gonna, we are gonna be getting together now that we received the PPE information from the state today. Kathy did training last week on some of the, some of the items, so we have a lot more information, so I anticipate that we'll be getting together in the coming weeks as we start to make plans for the primary in September.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Derek? Thank you. I see the update from the library. I don't believe Diane is here, so I can just give a quick run-through as the Select Board read. Because I'm sure you've seen, they've been doing the rollout of the summer program as well as the parking lot pickup. They're still doing contactless pickup of books, which has been keeping them very, very busy, and they're also going back to their delivery service starting today. And as of Wednesday, June 17th, we are permanently no longer charging overdue fines on all items owned by our library. So that's been a change they've been very excited about to make things more accessible. There'll still be fees on items that we share in the consortium and in our library loan services, but anything that we own, there'll no longer be fees on. The Goffstown Public Library is also doing a story walk from August, or sorry, July 1st to August 31st. And the summer experience starts July 6th, and that goes through August 14th, so you can find out more information about all of the programs that they have on the Goffstown Library website. Any questions for the library? I can answer them as well as Diane. Any other updates from?
Excuse me.
We do have the Fire Chief and Parks and Rec Director also on.
Great. Chief Aller, do you have any updates you'd like to give?
Sure, thank you. I have just, just a few overview from the emergency management side. We continue to monitor our, our local information as well as nationally. I think everyone's seen the news recently with several states having tremendous amounts of increase due to maybe opening things a little too quickly. However, so far that has not been the case here in New Hampshire. And as the Town Administrator mentioned, we have been working with our local businesses, and I'll certainly Town Administrator on the event that he mentioned earlier. Here in the state, we're just over 6,000 cases. I think things are heading in the right direction. Keep our fingers crossed. On the Fire Department side, we're certainly all healthy and no exposures recently. Our call volume continues to increase, and we certainly had an extensive event last week with a propane leak here in town at an apartment complex. While that was going on, there was actually other calls coming at the same time, and we were able to actually handle all of those between crews working in our call force and your mutual aid partners, so hats off to all those folks who came in to help out, and that was an event that lasted well after midnight. All of our inspection services are open, so we're completing all inspections for businesses who are putting in for those requests. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Chief? Rick, do you have any updates for us?
Sure. As far as our facilities go, we've been staying on all the, all the mowing of all the irrigated fields, all the school fields that are irrigated and private fields that we mow and our personal fields, so we've been up to speed on that. The drought, with the drought, we've been running our irrigation a little more, and we actually ran into a couple of problems with our Barnard irrigation. We had to replace some, some valves, control valves there, so, but everything's up and running nice and strong now. The bathrooms, we painted the pavilion bathrooms at both pavilions. The pool, pool house over at Barnard, we did the, all the inside of the bathrooms over there, we did them, painted those up. Adam talked about the sports complex, the fence, that'll look probably like the end-of-August type of thing for September, Aug, you know, August, September for a hopeful install. Goffstown Gallup, virtual Gallup, we had actually 64 people registered. It's pretty interesting. We had nine states represented. We had Arizona, Georgia, Illinois, Florida, Vermont, Connecticut, Mass, and Rhode Island, so it was kind of interesting. And actually, some of the folks, you know, the Georgia folks and the Arizona folks, they were, they're like alumni, you know, they ran that race many, many years and never had the opportunity because they moved away. So they were really enthralled that they were able to participate in it virtually, so it was pretty interesting. Starting next week, Aaron's going to start some different programs Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday at Barnard Park. We're going to do on Wednesdays, it's going to be Art in the Park, so you'll have like a morning session, an afternoon session. And then on Tuesdays, we're going to do, we call it a sports segment. On Tuesdays will be a basketball, so we'll play a game of horse around the world. Knockout, something like that. And then on Thursdays, we'll do pickleball. So all that'll start next week, and folks can register via the, our rec test system. And she just actually emailed, she started with an email today to the camp participants, and some of those programs are already full, so it's pretty, pretty amazing. But other than that, we're all doing well. Three of us in our department are doing fine.
Thank you, Rick. I just want to note that Rick let me know recently that I won my division for the Goffstown Gallup, but I was also the only person in my division, so there's that. But it was really fun, and I'm.
You never had, why'd you say that? You didn't have to say that.
You know, and also I want to say congratulations because it is Parks and Rec Month, and there's lots of exciting stuff going on on the Parks and Rec Facebook page, so please make sure you check that out. You're putting out all sorts of cool stuff right now, which I've enjoyed watching.
Quick question.
Yeah.
I have a question. When you were just going through your, what you guys were doing, you said you were maintaining private fields. What private field would you maintain?
Lionsfield.
That's the only one?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Rick? All right, thanks, Rick.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
Thank you, you too. All right. So discussion, so new business, does anyone have any new business to bring forward? Your Mark, Chet? And then for old business, we have the Goffstown Purchasing Policy. Eric, would you like to run through quickly the, the changes that we made and where the, that status of that policy is at for right now?
Yes, we last brought this to you on your meeting on June 22nd. There's, you'll see a tab eight, B, I. The changes, we've added since then a, a sample local preference language that is under section 1.10 on page one of the, of the document, and it would basically read, "Local Advantage, the town of Goffstown will make every effort to purchase from businesses located within Goffstown area. If the purchase provided it best meets the needs of, for the community, the town of Goffstown employees and officials have a responsibility to the taxpayers of the town to ensure that bids are awarded to vendors offering products or services that best meet the needs of the town." This was sample language that was suggested by Town Council. That is consistent with what many others use. In your packet on the 22nd, I did provide some sample language. If you wanted to go above and beyond that, that was really related to RFPs or bid specifics.
I like that language. Peter, I know you were the one who wanted to have that added specifically. Are you okay with those? That addition?
Absolutely. I want to make sure that, that our local businesses have made sure that they have the opportunity that they're reached out to in order to make sure that we can use them if possible, so. I think so. Support the community.
Mark or Chet, do you have any other comments on that additional language?
Nope, I'm all set with it.
Nope, same here.
And I think the only other change that we made from what was brought to you on the 22nd, we had in the proposed changes on June 22nd was to update the limits requiring purchase orders, verbal quotes and sealed bids. We've moved that recommended change and would maintain that where that currently is.
Derek, you need a motion?
Yes, please. If you would recommend adopting the changes as proposed in the Ju, July 13th packet that you have in front of you.
I'll make that motion. Now, we accept the changes to the purchasing policy that was presented to us tonight on 7/13/2020 packet.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Motion by Peter, seconded by Chet. Any further discussion? Okay, we'll go ahead and vote. Peter?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes, all set.
Chet?
Yes.
And yes for me. Motion passes. Thank you, Derek. Next, section 8B, we're going to go ahead and move that to next meeting. Chairman Adams would like to have some input and discussion about that, so we're going to go ahead and put that off till next meeting. Next, we have the Old Business Review of the Personnel Plan Consideration of Leave Policy. B? Derek, would you like to go into that, or Danielle?
Yes, thank you. We, we've started the process of going through the personnel plan and potential changes. We will all have other changes in the future to bring forward to you. But one item that we've been talking as for Department Heads is the Youth Vacation Leave. Because of some of the travel restrictions early on in the pandemic, the COVID pandemic, we found and we looked at this year versus the same time period last year, what people have used for vacation. And we are lagging a little bit in our vacation use, and right now, the Personnel Plan allows for employees to make a request to the Department Head and the Select Board to carry over at the end of the year. And the Select Board has taken that on a case-by-case basis, based on the circumstances that are presented to them. I guess my question for you is, do you want to continue with that procedure? Or would this be an opportunity to consider and look at maybe switching over to some type of rolling accrual that accrues on a monthly basis rather than being granted to employees all at once in January?
I'm in favor of exploring a, a cruel-based system. For us, and also cash out if possible. Oh, sorry.
No, it sounds like there's two issues there. One, one where he's talking, one where we're talking about because of COVID and what's happened, that people haven't been able to use their vacations this year. I think we need to address that first, and then look at the policy on how we accrue vacation at a later, we can look at that now, but take them as two separate issues.
No, I agree. I think I must have cut out, but one thing I was saying is I'd like to explore a potential cash out, which is something that gets done in this instance. Knowing what we budgeted for the year, it, it allows the employees to kind of get some of that or roll over typically in smaller. it, it allows the employees to kind of get some of that or roll over typically in smaller amounts, you know, maybe 40 hours or something like that. So I think we have a couple of options and I'd like to, you know, maybe talk with Derek and Danielle about how we could knock out a few different things to kind of take care of vacation time this year, as Peter mentioned, and then look at, you know, what it would take to go into a rolling accrual, what that means for employees that would be grandfathered in, how much time they'd be allowed to keep and things like that. So I agree. I think there's a lot of, a lot of different things we could do for this year in particular and kind of use that as a test catalyst for years in the future.
I got a couple, I got a little bit of a que, I got a couple of questions. Maybe Derek or Danielle can answer. And this is, and this is for the current year that I'm talking about. Because of the system that we're in now, they accrue, accrue it January 1st. So is it, how difficult Danielle or Derek would it be to say that anything they didn't use this year could be carried over for the first quarter and next year? And how hard would that be to encumber those funds so that this year's budget? I guess there's two questions there.
Well, I guess Danielle can maybe speak to encumbering the funds in the process for, for that. Danielle, can you touch on that a little bit?
So encumbering the funds, the way it would work is the funds would go into the unassigned fund balance, but they would be allocated as a reserved fund balance, meaning we'd have to keep those funds available to be spent on that specific purpose as opposed to just in the general pool unassigned fund balance. As far as the accrual goes, it would be a very manual process. We would have to go into the system and essentially reset all of our accruals at the end of the first quarter, which would be doing that annual process all over again, which typically takes about two business days to complete, start to finish, as opposed to doing just an accrual and continuing on as a monthly basis. Right now, they accrue everything for the prior year at one time and they have till the end of the next year to spend it. So that's how, you know, we would consider different options and want to bring forward some solutions for if we were to transition to a monthly accrual or something like that. People, it, it would be beneficial for people to have some sort of starting balance.
I guess, I guess that's, again, two different things that we're addressing. First one is this year with COVID and everybody in the first six months really hasn't really used their vacation because of COVID. So my question to you is, December 31st, we look and say Danielle has, wasn't able to use one week of vacation or two weeks of vacation. And we say, hey Danielle, you can continue, you can keep those vacation, but it has to be used in the first quarter. How hard would it be to record that?
We would basically have to reestablish how we've set up our entire accrual system in order to, to do that because our current system is built to wipe out at the end of the year. And then we manually tell it what can be carried forward because right now our system is on case-by-case basis. It's not impossible, but it would just be very manual and lots of room for error. So I would hesitate to go that route if there are other solutions.
Well, the other solution is to tell people they're gonna lose their vacation and all of a sudden, December, there's nobody working. We don't want that. So the other option is, as the Chair, Kelly suggested is a cash out, which is now is not in our policy, do that. So I mean, whatever we do, we're gonna have to change our policy. I just want to make sure that our employees are kept whole. And how we do that is where I want, we need to find out. Whether we say they can keep their vacations, but they have to use it by the first quarter, which is what my company does and that's why I say that. If I carry any vacation, I have to use it in the first quarter and then it starts over again. But, or, you know, a cash out. I don't know which other way you would do it. You can't just let it keep accruing and accruing because that would even be harder for me to understand.
And I, and I guess the reason we're bringing this subject to you is having a mass carryover or a mass request to carry over while maintaining the current structure where everybody gets it on January 1st. I think you're just potentially compounding the problem in 2021 because quite honestly, we, there's a strong possibility we could be in the same situation with travel restrictions and some other things. And department heads just kind of wanted to get a feel of, should we start telling people? Nope, it's unlikely to see a mass carryover. Vacation is time away from work, even if you can't travel. And it is meant for that reason and start encouraging our employees. But I guess I also see this as an opportunity. If the board wanted to go to a rolling accrual instead of that dump all in January 1st, this might present that, that option, whereas people have a little bit more banked at the moment.
Yeah, I agree. I, I also think just logistically, there's five more months to the year. So department heads should actively be working on trying to figure out how to schedule vacation time for people who haven't been able to take it. I know that's easier said than done more often than not, but we do have five more months left in, in the year, so they should be working on that. And also, yeah, we, we certainly need to establish a limit. If we were to do any sort of carryover or cash out, it has to be, you know, a week or potentially two. But I think there are options and I think we kind of need to map them out and, and look at what it would take to go to an accrual in that time phone. But as Peter said, it's certainly two issues. It's what do we do about vacation time this year? And then do we have the option moving forward to make a change?
We can't really wait. We really need to move on something.
Does anyone else have questions or comments?
We need to move pretty quick on this. You just can't let it carry, carry over.
I'm in favor of the rolling type of accrure, but we need to come up with a number. It was said by Peter and said by Kelly that how many hours are we gonna let them carry over? Or how many hours should we allow them to carry over so we don't end up again in a mass, you know, dump if something ever happens?
What do you think about a cash out, Mark?
I personally like cash outs. When, when I retired from Manchester Fire, I cashed out with all of my sick leave, all of my vacation time, and I got a check. And I mean, I, I would be in favor of that. I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I like a cash out. I think it's, it's a good way to go.
Yeah, it definitely has benefits to the town because we're, you know, paying out people their vacation time at their current pay rates before their, their rates change, so that's helpful. And also for the employees who maybe can't coordinate vacation time, they can take the money as a payout, which, you know, is a gift of time essentially in and of itself. So I think we have the ability to consider both options, but we need to map them out and see what it actually looks like, potentially by the next meeting if we have the capacity to do that, Danielle.
Some of the, Kelly, some of the discussions I've had with department heads as, and Chief's still on the line, I see that, is it's more important in some cases to get these people away from work instead of just letting them keep working and take the money. And, you know, not everybody feels that way. But I know there's, some of the department heads would rather see their people get out and clear their heads and get away from it for a while. Derek, I don't know how you feel about that, but that's how I look at it. I mean, I like to get away from it, but I can't.
No, I completely agree. I think there definitely needs to be a minimal usage so people do get away to clear their heads. I know a lot of people at Town Hall where we're a little bit more customer service and reliant on emails and that kind of thing. You have a lot of people that have email on the phone and have it on constantly, so yes. But, you know, in your packet, you were provided with three very general options. I can work with Danielle and the Vice Chair to flush those options out a little bit more. And then the meeting on the 27th brings some more substantial options for you to consider. You know, how many weeks, at what rate, we would potentially do it. And then the board could potentially move forward with a decision.
That's a good idea. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Chat.
And Derek, you were just speaking. I think Peter was talking about vacation. I would say my two cents is that it's very important to offer people choice. So if we can offer them choices of cash out or finding a way to use it quickly. And then Derek, I was gonna talk to you offline about this, but you were next on my list for the wellness. And, and what Peter was talking about is absolutely wellness-related. So I'll try to connect with you and we can talk about that more.
Okay, great.
Yeah, and I just want to preface it, Chat, with even if people took a cash out, that wouldn't in most instances be all of their vacation time. So they would still be allowed to do that. So I think you're right, it's three-part. Department heads working with them on getting them to take time, potentially this gift so we don't have mass carryover and so on and so forth. Yeah, we'll bring something next, next meeting and we can look at all the options. Do you have anything else to add on that or any other questions? And the Action Matrix. Just went over some of the personnel communication strategies. I know we're gonna be going back to some of the other policies. Danielle and Derek have been very busy, so I've been treading lightly with policies and them, but we will get back on that, especially now with the accrual policy. This New Hampshire State Council for the Arts Moose Plate Grant. Derek, was there any update on that?
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know, let the board know that we did get approval since the last meeting from the New Hampshire State Council on the arts to move that project forward into June of 2021. So we still do have those grant funds available for the preservation of the hand-painted curtains at Grassmere Town Hall, but we'll just be delaying that project for one year. So we did get approval to move that forward and we'll plan that for next spring.
Great, thank you. And it looks like we have a DPW six-wheel dump truck at Fairfield for warranty work on spreader and electrical issues. And then we also have two patrol cars having service as well. Derek, was there any other updates for those as of the packet being?
No, no, those are the only updates I have.
Does anyone have any questions about the Action Matrix? No, okay.
Kelly, can I just go back one step real quick? And I just want everybody to think about this. We're talking about this vacation situation. I hate to go backwards, but we have to think about what we do with, especially with DPW with kind of like in November, December, we really don't want them taking vacations. So we need to address this quickly.
Right now.
I hope the next meeting we can do that.
Yep.
I agree. Yeah, well, we'll, I'll make sure to touch base with Derek and Danielle tomorrow or the day after and we'll get some.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions? Old business, new business? All right, then we will go ahead and open it up for public comment once more. Derek, is there anyone on the phone?
No, there's no one on the telephone for public comment.
All right, great.
Make a motion to go into non-public under RSA 91-8:32A promotion, B hiring, and C matter likely to adversely affect reputation.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Motion by Peter, seconded by Chat. Any discussion? All right, we'll do a roll call. Peter?
Yes.
Chat?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And a yes from me. Thank you, Derek. Can you quickly go through the procedure for non-public this evening for the board? Are we?